Morning everyone and welcome to the Ordinary Meeting Minutes, sorry, the Ordinary Meeting of Manoisa City Council. I'd like to start off by acknowledging, doing acknowledgement of country. Manoisa City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land, the Kalkaduns, and, sorry, Manoisa City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land, the Kalkaduns, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. I'd like to start off with a prayer and we have Pastor Laurie here.
I'd like to read a few words from a text from a sound that we have this week, sound 107. Give thanks to the Lord because he is good, his love is eternal. Repeat these words in praise to the Lord, all whom he has saved. He has rescued you from your enemies and has brought you back from foreign countries, from east and west, from north and south. Then in their troubles they go to the Lord and he saves them from their distress. So let us pray. Loving Father, when we were captive in the darkness of sin and death, your son rescued us and brought us back to you. Teach us to trust in him and to live as your people. Lord be with this city council meeting and help them to make the right decision, what is the best interest for all people in this community here in Manoisa. We pray this Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Laurie, really appreciate that and I guess that just makes the, I guess I'd just like to say on behalf of the Manoisa City Council that we've had a couple of people pass away recently and we'd just like to express our deepest sympathies to the families of Brett Curry and Arthur Morris. Arthur Morris was Manoisa's oldest born resident, he was a long time volunteer at Meals on Wheels and a much loved husband of Anne Morris. And of course Brett Curry was a well-known local cartoonist, his works were often appearing in The North West Star and they will both greatly be missed. Thank you. And I just wanted to read out just the scripting for the recording of the council meeting, which, I'll just read that out now. Please note, the Ordinary Meeting is being livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meeting policy, which can be viewed on council's website. It is aimed that the recordings will be bookmarked, archived and made available for viewing on council's website within 72 hours from the conclusion of the meeting. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Please be advised that no protection is afforded to the public for comments made during the meeting which are subsequently challenged in a court of law and determined to be defilementary or slanderous. Councilors, council officers and public are required to adhere to the council standing orders policy, the model meeting procedures and the chamber conditions of entry. As we have no public in the forum, I'll skip from item three to item four, which is the conflict of interest. Councilors are invited to declare any interests in relation to the agenda, including any late items presented. Councilor interests are noted against relevant items by the minutes clerk for action during the meeting.
No.
No.
No conflicts.
No conflicts.
Thank you. That takes us now to, we have a few presentations. So to kick off, we, council has recently inducted a new group of trainees and apprentices to work and learn across various sectors of the Manoisa City Council and a number have come along today. Can you please stand up and say your name and where you're working? Thank you and look, we welcome you on board and we really hope that you enjoy your time at Manoisa City Council. Thank you for standing up, I know it's a bit nerve-wracking in front of a crowd, so thank you so much for coming along. Grab a seat, yep, thank you. And so our next one is Casual for Cause. So last month was, the charity was ovarian cancer awareness and as it was, sorry, last month was ovarian cancer awareness and that was the council's chosen cause. And the OCA supports women across Australia, including Manoisa, that have been diagnosed with ovarian cancer. So Manoisa City Council staff have raised $359.45 and we have a representative from staff to collect our cheque from council. So Carrie, if you want to come up? Deputy Mayor, you want to come up for a photo? I'd also like to congratulate the recipients of the Regional Arts Development Fund, round one, and welcome Acting Senior Sergeant Lyle McKelvey to accept this cheque for $9,383 for the Manoisa Police. The Manoisa Police Station Yarning Circle, a great project to construct a mini yarning circle in front of the police station to have a culturally appropriate place for the exchanging of information.
Take your biggest one.
We've got a blue shirt.
You're too tall, Lyle, just shining on you.
Yeah, you know you're right, yep.
Okay, so that brings us to item six, which is the previous council minute meetings. And can I have someone move the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on the 24th of February 2021 as received and be confirmed?
Moved.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Bowick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. All those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us to item seven and that's the development and land use and that's councillor George Fortune.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Through the chair, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation that council approve the development application for a material change of use for self-storage units warehouse at 18 Marion Street, Manoisa, described as lot 68 on plan MPH 13993, subject to the following conditions of approval and those conditions are 1 to 17.
Thank you. And can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor Fortune, would you like to talk on behalf of that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you Madam Mayor. The development application conditions, 1 to 17, just carry out the general provisions that are around development applications like car parking, the amenity, the street visuals, landscaping around the building and the environmental services also getting there and give their opinions on how the construction waste and all that should be dealt with and finally the compliance of conditions as well. That's pretty much path across with a lot of the development applications with those conditions.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And councillor Streton, would you like to talk on behalf of this one?
No, nothing for me, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors like to comment on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to your second one councillor Fortune, material change use.
7.2, thank you Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation that council approve the development application for a material change of use for intensification of an existing church use. In brackets, there's two external classrooms at 1 Blaney Street, Manoisa, described as lot 19 on plan MPH 35346, subject to the following conditions of approval and those conditions are numbered 1 to 11.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And can I have a second for that motion?
Seconded, Bowick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, once again, Madam Mayor, the conditions include the development application, how they are generally accordance with the approved documentations in the conditions and also landscaping environmental services, the construction, the handling of construction demolition waste and engineering. And around the engineering, because the site is a church site, there's a total of 30 car parks as indicated on their site plan and those compliance with the conditions also mean that the owner of developers shall contact council if there's any changes to the plan.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
Just in support, Madam Mayor, I think there's a long-term use here of the church. This is just another example of them developing the site and I think it's been well portrayed in the submission, so yeah.
Thank you. And any other comments from any councillors? All those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us to item eight, which is works in construction and that's over to councillor Mick Tully.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Item 8.1, the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the February 2021 Infrastructure Services monthly report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Yeah, there's just a few things that we, some projects that have been happening in January and February, that the Transfield Brett Avenue cycle path, the Thompson Road share path, the Barclay Highway cycle shared path and the waste management facility. There's a couple of things in that report. It says 2020 Christmas tree, I certainly hope that's 2021, I guess we probably look at that. And I think the exciting thing that I'm looking forward to is the smart meters, which I think the tender is, has been awarded or it's about to be awarded and it'll be coming to council, I think, at the next meeting. So yeah, it'd be exciting to have that in and sorted because it'll certainly help council with leaks and issues that we have with, you know, leaks throughout the whole water system.
Thank you councillor Tully. Who's that? Councillor Fortune, any?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Look, I support the motion, Madam Mayor. There's a number of exciting projects that are up on our radar at the moment and probably need to get it out to the community. I suppose it's been put out once or twice, but a few more times just to remind the community of what's actually going on. You know, the family fun park redevelopment and the Gallipoli Park development, recreational development in the Gallipoli Park and the shared cycle path, you know, all of those are adding to the city's livability and it's a big thing that council wants to promote. And there are a number of those projects that are funded and that are going to be a great benefit to the community, so I'd probably like to get those out through our media a bit more often and get people talking about them.
Good point. Thank you councillor Fortune. Anybody else got any comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us to councillor Tully, your next one.
Thank you Madam Mayor. It's late item 8.2, the Civic Centre Remedial Works update. There's, I'd like to recommend that the council receive and note the Civic Centre Remedial Works update.
Thank you councillor Tully. And can I get a second for that one?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you Madam Mayor. I just, I know I've sort of been talking about this for a while now, but I think we probably really need to look at how this has been completed. I mean, it's been 12 months since it closed. There's, you know, in December, the toilet refurbishments were to be done by council and now I think, I see that they're going to be contracted. So I really think we need to, you know, I mean, I know we've been short-staffed and all that and I take that on board, but you know, I don't think it's suitable for the civic centre to be down for 12 months, it's just not, it's not fair to the ratepayers and I think this needs to be addressed, you know, moving forward with other projects that we look at. So yeah, so I think that's, that's, that's pretty important that we look at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going off the background to the upgrades, they're sorely needed, the external soffit collapsing areas, you know, there's workers out there right now putting up the framework for that to put the rest of it in. There's also the fire services, the internal walls in state of disrepair and the auditorium floorboards broken, the external shade cells, we have to do, come up with a better plan there. And the copper doors, I mean, they were an original fit and part of the whole development of this precinct and I'm for one glad to see they're going back in there because they're a part of our history, I suppose, or the history of the whole precinct. It was built in the mid 70s and it is sorely in need of this upgrade. And you know, councillor Tully touched on the toilets too as well requiring upgrades, so there's a significant amount of work that's been done and it's long overdue. And yeah, I'd like to support councillor Tully and the amount of time that's taken isn't acceptable to the community and we just have to do things better in the future.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anyone else want to?
Through the chair, thanks Madam Mayor. I just was reading the executive summary but, and they're saying the first performance which we're aware of is due to occur on the 1st of April. Is the building going to be available for that? It wasn't quite clear in the narrative.
No. Sorry, yes, through the chair. The expected date now is the 30th to the 4th.
So through you Madam Mayor, can you go to the director first?
Yeah, thanks Madam Mayor. Yes, the final soffit installation might be completed until late April. However, there is a performance that's actually on the 3rd of April and they're bumping in on the 1st and we were over there yesterday, they've already commenced the cleaning of the building and that performance will be able to go ahead. The outstanding works after the end of this week will be the soffit lining at the southern end. Councillor Fortune indicated they're finishing the structural work this week and then they've just got to wait for the final material.
Okay.
So they can isolate that work area upstairs. The corridors have been a bit problematic and we've got some final repairs to do, all final adjustments to be undertaken on the main entrance door. It's early next week.
Thanks for that.
And can I just say that the first performance is probably going to be sold out because it is blui. So anyone who's not taking their kids away for the Easter school holidays, get online now and book your ticket because blui's coming to town. And if you haven't got little kids, this is a very popular cartoon in Australia, so yeah, glad they're coming. All right, so if there's no more comments?
Yes, sorry, through the chair. So I've just got one question for Bernard, is the toilets, what's, what's happening with the toilet refurbishment?
We're doing an initial fix-up, there are a few faulty fittings before early April and then we anticipate the full refurbishment will be May or June. The reality is we've had difficulty getting folks. But yeah, that's been a problem. So they will be refurbished, but we'll just have to work in around.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item nine, which is beautification, parks, gardens and youth. And that's councillor Kim Coghlan.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I'd just like the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the February 2021 Parks and Gardens monthly report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Of course I would. Just through the chair, the easement and drains around town don't seem to be getting cleared as quick as I know I would like and a few of the public would like. I'd just like to ask the CEO, are the state government in the process of clearing what they own?
Through you Madam Mayor, they've been requested to do that, we'll put another request in.
Yep, okay then, thank you. The barbecues at the Lions, Apex Park, I think it is, Mundara Park it's usually called. We asked quite a while ago, two wood barbecues were vandalised out at that park and we were supposed to get two wood barbecues put back in place and I don't think they've been done yet. I just want to make sure they get done because the tourist season is coming and they do get used quite a lot at that time. Don't want gas, we need the wood barbecues put back in, that's what they seem to like.
Do we supply wood with those? Do we, as a council, provide wood nearby for that?
No, no, no.
No? People go and find some?
I think there's enough there. They help the clearing, so. But I would like those put in just with tourist season coming up. And I have, I got a question from the public and I couldn't answer them because I hadn't been informed. The lights in the toilets at both Captain Cook and Sunset Park, are they now being turned off at nine o'clock, not six?
Through you Madam Mayor. I haven't checked the toilet lights lately, but we can get someone to have a look and see where the lights are.
Yep, because they were getting turned off at six and I asked if they'd be turned off at nine in line with the lights going off at nine o'clock on the ovals.
I would agree with that, so if they're consistent with the ovals, that would be the best idea.
Okay then. And also, I know there's been a lot of trees placed within the CBD in different spots and all that, but I think we have made a bit of an error with one. Someone has been directed to plant a tree directly on the corner of the icon at Isa. Now, there's a CCTV camera there, that's not a PTZ, it's got the four screens on it. If that tree, it's not a bad height now, but as it gets higher, it's going to nullify that camera working properly. So would we be able to get that removed and maybe put hedges or something else in there?
Sorry councillor, what's the address?
I'm not too sure.
Western Isa Street.
Western Isa Street, the old Argent Building, so it's Iconet Isa. It's on the corner and I know the tree looks dead, but it has got green shoots and all that, but it is going to be a problem later on for security with that camera, so it does need to be removed and we need to keep it, just hedges or something there.
Could it be trimmed down?
No. No.
So through you Madam Mayor, we might ask Parks and Gardens about why the tree was selected for that area. It may be that that tree doesn't grow anymore, I don't know. I haven't been and had a look at the tree, but I'll ask the director to follow. I haven't been and had a look at the tree, but I'll ask the director to follow that.
We could replant it with the one that's died down the road, hopefully. And that's all I have.
Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on this motion? Thank you. And can, I noticed that we put out a request for residents to take up two native plants. Does anyone know how that went?
So through you, Madam Mayor, the public's feeling around trees and shrubs is outstanding. I think we've been overwhelmed. How many? Five hundred? So five hundred residents have requested two trees or two shrubs. And it's still open at the moment, as I understand it. So I imagine that figure will increase even further, which is a great little program to be running.
It is. And I'd just like to remind people, if they don't want a couple of plants, maybe think about your local school, because your local school will only be able to get two plants. So you may be able to go and see your local school or kindy and see if they want any plants. And you can get two plants for them. So that's a great initiative by council.
Madam Chair, I'd just comment on the CBD maintenance. I've noticed a real improvement there with the steam cleaning and I think the staff are doing an excellent job down there. Is there plans for, you know, doing that on a routine basis?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there is. It's a recurrent item within the budget. Off the top of my head, I'm going to say there's either forty or fifty thousand dollars allocated for those works to be undertaken on a regular basis. I'm also under the impression, but I don't know, that usually it's also done just before rodeo as well to make sure the town looks very presentable. So, yes, it will be a regular occurrence. And I think this is the first time, as I understand it, we've used steam. In the past, we've actually used high-pressure water hoses, but we're using steam at this point.
I was also going to ask a question, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also going to ask a question about the CCTV survey. Is this the right one or wait till the next one? I was just going to ask if, I know we went out to the community about where they thought we could put CCTV cameras. Are we going to sort of publish that?
So through you, Madam Mayor, yes, we will. But after the internal consultation has occurred, so those sites have been identified by the public, have been presented to the other areas of council. So they can work out if there's any underground infrastructure that's going to be impacted by a camera going in there. And also whether there's any hindrances relating to the supply of electricity or anything else like that. So there's an internal referral that finishes, if I remember, on Monday for staff to come back to our IT area to say if there's any hindrances to our cameras going in the suggested spots. I haven't got the suggested spots in front of me at the moment.
Thank you, David. And I guess I have a question that maybe councillor Coghlan can answer is, so with the CCTV cameras, there's a lot of people asking me why they're not monitored. And I know there's a good explanation of how it all works and I just thought you might be able to update us.
Yeah, they are monitored, they're just not monitored twenty-four seven. They used to be and then the government decided to take a bit of funding off the police, so that was shut down. But how it works now, the screens are all up in the area where all your general duties police are and the shift supervisor sits there, the cameras are behind him. At any stage, he can monitor those and know what's going on. So there's not someone sitting there, like in Logan. Logan was what we originally planned to do here in Mount Isa. Logan have their own system where they have around the clock, someone just watching. They've got so many screens, it's unbelievable. But they are looked at. They're not used just for getting information after the act has happened. They can be used as something is happening or to see what is happening in the CBD and other areas. So they are, I'd just like the public to know that they are looked at. They're not just sitting there. All this money's not just being spent for nothing. They are very, very valuable in our community. And I know the police value all the information that they can get from them.
Thank you. And we have funding for extra cameras, so that's a bright initiative by council.
So through you, Madam Mayor, can I just add to what councillor Coghlan said? There is no one at council viewing the screens, nor are there any screens in the council building that directly relate to the CCTV, except the CCTV that manages this building. So I think there are some people, there is an understanding that perhaps we have IT staff or other staff watching large monitors. We do not have other staff watching large monitors. The only large monitors are, as councillor Coghlan said, in the police station itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us now to item ten, which is tourism, events, sport and recreation and library. And that's councillor Peter McCrae.
Thank you. I'd like to move that council receives and accepts a February twenty twenty-one library monthly report.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Stretton. Councillor McCrae, would you like to talk on behalf of that motion?
Um, yes, I will. The report just goes over the winners of the master plan competition, as we talked about last week. We had someone come in and get the prizes. And also Library Lovers Week that they had back at Valentine's Week. But I'd like to bring up that this week is Harmony Week and library is holding a Harmony Day event at eleven o'clock. So anyone who can get along to the library at eleven o'clock this Friday, that will be a good event to attend.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Stretton, would you like?
No, I think through the chair, Madam Mayor, councillor McCrae summed it all up there.
Thank you, she certainly did. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us to our next item for councillor McCrae.
Um, yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts a February twenty twenty-one tourism and events monthly report.
Can I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
Um, as usual, we have lots happening in that space with all the events we have coming up. ANSEC Day next month and also continually getting prepared for the Hundred Year Celebration in twenty twenty-three. There's a bit of movement in that space at the moment. But what's pertinent for this week is the Friday night debrief. There's a famille happening in town on Friday with the script writers coming into town. So if anyone has any ideas of who they think would be good characters or any storylines or places that you think would be great to appear, feel free to shoot us an email or come and see me and we might be able to pass that information on.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can't remember, seconded. Oh, sorry councillor Fortune, any comments on that?
No comment, through the chair.
Okay, are we taking them underground when they get here? Will they have time? Because I think if, you know, they're doing a series of mine, they would be surprised how awesome the Outback at Iza Underground experience is.
Yeah, I think they're just here for the day. There's councillor John Wharton of mayor and the three script writers. And from the email I saw yesterday, they've got a pretty packed itinerary by the time they go to the lake, the granites, everywhere else around town. But, I mean, if they could go underground at Outback at Iza, that might, where else could they do that, along the Overlander's Way? So that might be a good.
Yeah, I think they'd be.
Script piece for us.
Very surprised how fantastic it is, yeah. Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes you to your next item, councillor McCrae?
Oh, me too. I'd like to move that council provide limited membership to the Hundred Year Celebration Advisory Committee to the following community and business representatives. Oh, would you like me to read those or as listed?
As listed, it's fine.
As listed?
Read them.
Read them?
Yep, read them out.
Okay, so we have already announced our chair, Ron McCulloch, Mary Anne Wyppackey, Gary Murray, Steve Carson, Kath Donnelly, Emma Harmon, Tammy Parry, Cherie Tupperanian, Kay Smith, Natalie Flecker, Ian Brown, Tara Bell and the councillors of Mount Isa City Council.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, these people obviously had to apply through our process to show that they were willing to be on the committee. And a cross-representation of different industries and community groups are being represented. I feel that it's a really great balance. We have a lot of really experienced and community members that have done a lot of work for our community in the past and I'm sure this is going to be a great committee moving forwards.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, do you have any comments on this one?
No, I was just, one, I guess one thing that I thought about over the last few weeks is maybe for the Hundred Year Celebrations, we could sell plaques, people could buy plaques and maybe we could, you know, give the money to a charity or some mining thing or something. So, you know, you could have, for example, the Coghlan family or the Tully family, you know, or something like that. And I just think that'd be, you know, a good idea. But anyway, we can speak about that.
Have like a wall, is it?
Yeah, maybe, you know, whether, where a wall or maybe somewhere in the, you know, in the area where the old Harvey Norm used to be, if that, you know, if that precinct does go ahead with something. You know, I think it'd be certainly something, people coming back from Mount Isa that have left Mount Isa. I mean, they could certainly buy a plaque and, you know, we could do something like that.
Yeah, and even a copper plaque.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Tully, you are actually listed on the advisory committee, so that will be a good project for you to bring up.
Oh, thank you.
Through the chair, yeah, I'll just comment too. I think it's a great idea, councillor Tully. But also I'd just like to mention there is a bit of a surge on projects that are coming forward now at the present time. So certainly the, you know, the emphasis on the Hundred Year Celebrations is rising around the city and that's really good to see. So I think during the rest of this year, we'll see some wonderful projects come up.
Through the chairs, want to support councillor McCrae's initial comments about the broadness, I suppose, of the committee members and they represent mining and tourism, event organisers, state government, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, the community and the Kalkadoon people too are represented as well. And I think it's a very, very good cross-section of our community. And looking forward to developing the plans and concept for our Hundred Years' Celebrations.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
Yeah, through the chair, just, I don't know what the selection process was, but I noticed in the people that had nominated, you've got no one there with any young children or anything as part of the group. And there was, is there a chance for other people to join the committee at a later stage or is it closed for business?
In the report, it said others will be able to join subcommittees. So if someone has an interest group, there will be subcommittees. But my understanding is this will be the committee moving forward for the Hundred Years'.
And also don't forget I have young children.
Yeah, I'm not sure what everyone's children status is on this list. We do have someone representing education and community though, Kath Donnelly from Education Queensland.
Yeah, through the chair, there's a broad cross-section there. And if they don't have children, they've got grandchildren too as well. So it's, it's, it's pretty representative.
Yeah, but, but, you know, look, two years is a long time and we may have members not, you know, unfortunately not be able to continue on. So there could be some openings in the future. And, look, I personally would be reaching out to anyone in the community who wants to give us some ideas and feedback along the journey.
Yeah, just sort of reiterating that, I think, you know, regardless of, I mean, at some stage you need some sort of leadership. And I think regardless of whether you're on the committee or not, you know, I mean, if you're passionate about Mount Isa, I don't think it really matters whether you're on a committee or not. And I'm certainly, you know, the people on the committee there, I mean, they'd certainly listen and, you know, take ideas on board. So, yeah, I think it's, you know, I'm pretty confident that that committee is what we need.
Yeah, and again, I think, well, I know I will be going out to the public and chatting to them about ideas and things, events we can do. So I'm sure that's how the committee will work. And hopefully we'll get a broad cross-section of an events for the year. Okay, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven, which is the environmental management report, and that's councillor Paul Stretton.
Water and sewer, isn't it, Madam Mayor?
Oh, yeah. In environmental.
Oh, sorry, environmental management, full stop, no report.
Uh, offers recommendations there, council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty-one water and sewer monthly report.
Thank you councillor Stretton. A second for that?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would you like to speak on behalf of that?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the water team's been working pretty hard. Four hundred and twenty metres of water mains have been replaced. And I'd just like to thank the public for the appreciation and understanding that they've had with council while they've been doing these projects with the water shut-offs. They've been really cooperative in these, in understanding. So I'd just like to thank that community on that.
No, I think, you're certainly right there. Councillor Fortune, would?
Yeah, look, support the work and comments from councillor Stretton. There's that water, that Capital Works project on our water infrastructure is sorely needed, especially in that area of Soldier's Hill where it's taking part, post-war era construction there. And some of that infrastructure is, you know, was laid in the ground in the nineteen fifties and sorely needs a replacement. And getting on with our Capital Works is not a pretty thing, I suppose you can say, for our community, but it needs to be done for our water infrastructure for the future as well. So, yeah, I'd like to congratulate the team on their progress there. Like four hundred and twenty metres, there's a lot of earth to dig up and pipes to lay. So it's good to see all that works happening and ongoing.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any other comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, the leak that we've, we're to check, I'm not too sure where it is now, over? Yeah, Breakaway Creek. Is there any further things on that? Because I was under. Yeah, I was under the understanding that we were going to get a report back on that, but.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I might go to the director or I might go to the manager. Sorry, Stephen, can you go near a microphone, please?
Sorry, can I just clarify?
Um, I think it was one of the team priv that was looking at a leak in Breakaway Creek up, I guess it's, yeah, behind Jacobson Crescent.
Near the bridge.
What area is that? Sunset?
Yeah, Sunset.
Sunset.
Going into Pioneer.
Okay, no, I'm not specifically aware of that one, but we'll, I'll check and give you some information offline.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point two.
Eleven point two Waste Management Monthly Report, officers' recommendations there. Council receives and accepts this February twenty twenty-one Waste Management Monthly Report.
Thank you councillor Stretton. Can I get a second for that motion? McCrae. Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Stretton, would you like to talk on that motion?
Yeah, just a few little problems in February there, a couple of breakdowns with vehicles led to waste collection pickups. I'd just like to note that the Department of Environmental Science completed inspection of the facility on eighth of February to investigate potential resource recovery area, landfill, border, non-compliance reported by the Waste Management Section and Environmental Services in September of twenty twenty. This inspection resulted in a positive response with a list of recommendations with opportunities for further improvement. And also in the month of February, the team leader of Waste Management attended the Local Government Association of Queensland Waste Forum in February to sustain further funding streams to assist in potential future waste service modernisation projects and inform on the position and progress of the Mount Isa City Council Waste Management Services.
Thank you councillor Stretton. Councillor McCrae, would you?
Um, no, I have nothing to add.
Any other comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point three.
Bear with me. Okay, officers' recommendation there, council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty-one Environmental Services Monthly Report.
Thank you. And a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Stretton, would you like to talk on that motion?
Yeah, but just a bit of a brief summary there. The ES team responded to two service requests in relations of public health concerns. Nine and. Nine and applications for new food businesses, nine services requests for environmental complaints and four requests in relation to littering and illegal dumping. Conducted inspections of eight food premises and issued reports and businesses outlining any non-compliances observed during inspections and advice on corrective actions required. The first food safety supervisors course for twenty twenty-one was held by the ES coordinator. All local food businesses were invited to attend and fifteen attendees participated. Undertook, uh, monthly groundwater monitoring at council's landfill, undertook landfill gas monitoring at council's landfill site. And that just about sums it up.
Thank you councillor Stretton. Councillor McCrae, have you?
Um, no, I'd just like to note that it's disappointing that we continue to have, you know, the illegal dumping, but other than that, nothing to add.
Thank you. And, uh, when I talked about free plants, I was talking in, um, in, uh, obviously parks and gardens, but it really is a environmental initiative. So, um, it's great to see the community getting right behind that. Any other comments on this one?
Uh, through the chair, um, just on the illegal dumping, I, I would just, uh, like to get an idea from the executive, um, uh, how that's going, whether it's, it's increasing or it's steady. Um, I, I noticed some overnight, there was a, a, a pretty serious one out behind Ryan Road there, near the industrial estate, um, which was, uh, flagged on social media, um. Yeah, I think the, um, through the chair, I think the, uh, the signs and that are very well, you know, um, recognised now and they're around the, around the, um, the district, just, um, advising people of serious fines if they are caught. And, um, uh, it'd be, uh, something I think we really need to watch closely, yeah.
Yeah, just a comment through the chair too, uh, and, uh, noted an item in that, uh, in the environmental services report about the, um, little red, uh, flying fox, alternative roost. And then see that the, um, activities around the installation of the infrastructure is well underway. And, um, it's good to see that, uh, ticking over in the designs and, uh, uh, all of that's been done for the layout of the trees and irrigation and roads, et cetera. Um, I'd just like to probably mention once again that, uh, I, I don't see a mention of, uh, termite control in there. So, uh, I know that native trees will be going in, but native trees are susceptible to, uh, termite infestation as well. And, and I would like, uh, any tree that goes in there to have a reasonable chance of success. And, and, and this part of the country especially, um, termite control is, uh, important. So, uh, if we can, uh, if we can get a bit of feedback on that, I would appreciate that.
Through you, madam mayor, if I can throw to the director please?
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you Bernard.
Um, through the chair, I'd just like to, um, thank the local laws department, cause I know I've been, um, giving them quite a lot of jobs to do. Um, a lot of them are from the public.
Councillor Coghlan, can I stop you there?
Oh, sorry.
We're not up to local laws yet.
Oh.
That's the next one.
Next one.
On turbo today, sorry.
All right.
Sorry, I, I have a question that I'm not a hundred percent sure on, so maybe everyone else isn't either. If, if people out there see illegal dumping going on, would it be a police matter or a local laws matter if?
Through you, madam mayor, it's a local laws office, uh, matter. In the first instance, it may proceed to police after that. But if they're issued with a fine, it would go through the, the spur process anyway. So, either way.
Okay.
And, sorry, through you, madam mayor, they can report that via email, they can use the snaps, uh, save and, um.
Send and solve.
Send and solve, all those S's, um, or they can obviously ring up council and let council know.
Yeah, cause I see there is a, a, you know, a case of asbestos being dumped there. So that is quite serious. If people out there see anything going on or having the information, it would be helpful if they could share that.
Very good point councillor McCrae. Okay, if there's no more, um, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point four.
Okay, local laws monthly report, council receives and accepts this February twenty twenty-one local laws monthly report.
Thank you councillor Stretton, can I get a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, uh, would you like to speak on behalf of this report councillor?
Yeah, just like to note, um, local laws department rehomed twenty-three animals, twelve dogs and eleven cats, implanted forty-four marker chips in cats and dogs, investigated four alleged dog attacks, attended five after-hours aggressive dog reports, engaged in a new monthly education initiative. And, um, in a combined rescue effort, council's local laws department and the department of agriculture and fisheries seized two horses due to neglect and poor condition. Our animal management officer has taken the responsibility of caring for the horses under the direction of DAF. Both horses' teeth and hooves have been filled and both animals have been vet checked and now show remarkable improvement since coming into our care. Um, I'd just like to hint rate that, um, local laws or the RSPCA do not, um, neglect the horses, animals and all that sort of thing is not, um, tolerated in the community. And, um, people should be held, held accountable for their actions over cruelty to animals.
Very good point. Okay, um, can I just ask, i- i- uh, are those, what happens to those horses now? Do we find a home for them?
I, I don't know what'll happen down the road, but I dare say.
Through, through you, madam mayor, the, the staff will find a home for those horses and there's different groups that look after those.
Oh, fantastic. That's good news. Um, so councillor Coghlan, you seconded the motion?
Okay, I'm the right one now. I'd just like to thank local laws staff because over the last couple of months, I know I have been, um, adding to their workload through a lot of public coming to me with, um, overgrown yards, allotments and that. And just a warning to people, uh, we've had a very good, well, a pretty good wet season. So a lot of the grass is quite high around the town, but as it dries out, it becomes a really bad fire hazard. So just a warning to people, like, you need to keep things a little bit low. Um, but just a big thank you to the local laws people for the job they do. I think they do an excellent job.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And then that brings us to eleven point five.
Okay, um, Copper Spring Project environmental impact statement submission. Council endorsed the Copper Spring environmental impact statements submission. Ensures that all strategies to mitigate environmental impacts are followed as outlined in the environment and impact statement.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick. Councillor Stretton, would you like to talk on behalf of that motion?
Um, I think this just goes a long way to getting this project up and running for the Mount Isa, you know, wa- um, mining industry. Um, as soon as we can move along with it, the better.
Yeah, yeah. Councillor, the deputy mayor.
Uh, thanks chair, um, so, um, look, I think this is a wonderful project. I think any piece of infrastructure of this size coming through the north west and across the corridor is, is great. Um, the, uh, benefits for industry have been, um, seem to be, uh, well recognised now, um, that, you know, they, they will be afforded, um, cheaper electricity to run their operations and it may make more mining and, um, and other resource, um, adventures, uh, more viable. Um, and get a, get a, a leg up. So, um, one of the things I think, um, and I, I know that this document is really about, um, the, uh, uh, you know, forging the way for, the pathway for the infrastructure to go forward. However, there seems to be a lack of, um, uh, community impact, uh, around at the moment because it's not clear to me, despite, um, questioning this a number of times around, um, what the impact on electricity prices in the Mount Isa community is going to be going forward. Um, and, uh, my understanding is that when it's connected here, we'll be part of the, uh, the national electricity market and that, um, uh, there will be a number of providers that will make electricity available to consumers here, which will have an impact on prices. Um, but it may in fact, uh, drive prices up. Um, and none of that's been modelled or provided to us by the developers of Copper Spring at this point in time. Um, so I'd, I'd call on the developers or the owners to, um, to try to provide for modelling to, to the community, um, as, and they may have this in their pipeline at all, but I, I still, I think this is going, um, it's been underway for quite some time now and we still haven't had any information provided to us around that. Um, so I'd, I'd really like to see that happen.
Um, would we be calling on developers or would it be a good idea to talk to the state government?
Uh, uh, the state government are, um, involved in this, um, and chair in, in that, um, there is a subsidised, um, electricity for residents and businesses in the community at the present time, uh, through the competition authority that, um, that sort of oversee it. Uh, so, um, uh, I believe state government have a role in this, um, and whether we're going to lose that subsidy and it may have an impact on prices, um, I'm not certain. We have never been, had that made clear to us. Um, and, um, the fact that we're going into possibly a free market economy then, um, may, may well impact on us, um.
I was gonna say, cause the sta- um, the develop- developer did sort of say that it wouldn't impact on, on residents at all and that the subsidy would be in place. But it is a great question that we probably should put to the state government to make sure that, that they're the ones who give us the subsidy, not the developer, you know, so we probably need to talk to them about making sure we have something maybe in writing.
Definitely through the chair, that should be in writing from the state government.
So through you, madam chair, the, um, uh, at the rock meeting we were at at Julia Creek, there was a representative from Copper String, um, who, uh, uh, video conferenced in. Um, he did make comment around that issue and said the prices would not change, but we can write a letter. Uh, so that he, he indicated the level of subsidy would remain, um, and said that, um, uh, yeah, there'll be no changes, but we can get a ri- write a letter and get confirmation on that.
No, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point six.
Okay, um, officers' recommendation there is council award a contract for the supply of and install packs, mixes and chlorination units, R F T twenty twenty dash one one I S to Grenoff P T Y L T D for the sum of on one eight four five zero zero excluding G S T.
Thank you councillor Stretton, can I get a second for that?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Stretton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, I'd just like to say this is just a ongoing, um, thing for council to keep Mount Isa water supply up to a good quality.
And.
No comment for myself.
Councillor Fortune. No other comments on this one?
Yeah, I, I, I'd just like to comment, I think the way we've been putting chlorine into the water is probably a bit prehistoric. So it'd be good to see that now we've got mixes. Thank you.
And the chlorination units, are they, they're the self-in- they're the self-injector ones? Are they the self-injecting ones or the, the bubbles?
The contract was for reservoir mixing and chlorine, chlorine dosing.
Yep.
Recommending that this stage is just the mixing.
Yep.
Because there are some issues with consistency of the dosing.
Yep.
And, uh, also the, the funds don't, um, the current funding doesn't support both. The funding to do the mixing, that's an immediate positive benefit. And we will have some discussions for the Queensland Water Supply this afternoon and discuss, uh, changing pipe work, reconfiguring, reconfiguring the reservoirs and chlorine dosing. So I think we'll have a sort of a review by board after those discussions. Not, not doing it, it's just not doing the chlorine. There is still chlorine injection on two of those reservoirs, but that is not.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point seven.
Okay, um, Mount Isa's city council reservoir for replacement and reseal. Officers' recommendations there, uh, council does not award the M I C C reservoir for roof replacement and reseal tender number R F T twenty twenty-one dash O S O two, sorry, I S. And that the strategy for repairing the reservoir be reviewed and an alternate strategy proposed for consideration in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two financial year and that council relocates the funds to reservoir one project.
Thank you councillor Stretton.
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank, thank you councillor Fortune. Uh, councillor Stretton, would you like to talk on that motion?
Uh, just go, just, just ongoing, um, repairs to the, our reservoirs, these will always be ongoing. Um, this goes a long way to, you know, just keeping everything shipshape.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
I've got a, a question around the, the costing, whether it's, um, our, our scoping, um, and, uh, lack of resources, I suppose, around our budgeting and the, uh, quotes that come in from the tenders, um, or tenders come in, that come in, sorry. Um, the, the tenders seem to be, um, very far and above and above, uh, a, a job of that description, uh, for, um, previous types of jobs that council has done. And the prices that they quote and, and some of them have tended, uh, like the, um, cover a rebuild of a new reservoir and not just a, a roof replacement. So, um, the question I suppose is, um, are we, uh, under resourcing or are we getting over tended? This question through the chair.
Yes, through you, mister, um, madam mayor, um, yes, all of the above, but I will also hand over to the, the interim manager of water and sewer. But I would note that the responses to attend is not just in the water, water and sewer area, as is demonstrated by other reports within this council agenda, moves considerably and there are challenges. I'll hand back over.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, so I think we underestimated significantly the cost of replacing it because the original estimate, uh, was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, one that I was involved with twelve months ago, which was only half the diameter, ended up costing three hundred and fifty thousand. So I, with four times that area, I would expect that, you know, as a rough guess, four times the, the cost, which would be over one million dollars. So I'm not surprised by the size of the tenders, even though there's, there's some sort of scarcity of, um, suitable contractors out here and so on. I think we got the estimate wrong, so we need to rethink that. And there's actually two conflicting reports, the more recent report that says the whole thing needs to be replaced, replaced and one from twenty eighteen that says all the support structures, it's a thirty-five metre diameter roof, there's a lot of vertical support, that they're all in poor condition and need replacing, but the roof actually is good. So I want to now step back and say we need to reconcile those because we might be spending half a million dollars which we don't need to spend if we only need to replace the, uh, support structures. So there's a fair bit of leeway in those dollars to take a deep breath and have a, another look at it and then re-tender it when we decide what is the best way to go. And the, the money that was set aside, that, that three fifty thousand just happens to be about the shortfall. We need to complete reservoir one, so on that next report.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried, which takes us to item eleven point eight.
Um, uh, Mount Isa City Council Reservoir One Repair and Reseal. Officers' recommendations there, council award the Mount I, M I C C Reservoir One Repair and Reseal R F T twenty twenty-one dash O one to Queensland Maintenance and Painting Services for the amount of four nine 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 nine, excluding G S T. With approval to negotiate any relevant variations within the project approved budget.
Thank you councillor Stretton, can I get a second for that? Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Stretton, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Um, it's just an ongoing, um, repair of our, our reservoirs. Um, it's one of the things we need to get, get done.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
No, no comment.
Thank you. Any comments from?
Uh, chair, do you just, um, have a, it's a significant fund. Um, I just wonder, um, if there's any, uh, sort of idea of the life of the asset once this works is completed, um, how far it'll extend it out.
Through you, madam mayor, I might just go to the, uh, interim manager please.
The guarantees are fifteen years on the, uh, lining. So, um, it's a fairly substantial. So, um, it's a fairly substantial lining, it's a polymer cement tissue product. And I'm not a chemist, so I can't actually mean, but it's not a spray. So even if it's a pretty substantial sort of product. Fifteen years expected life.
Uh, I suppose it begs the question of, um, what would a replacement tank cost, um, in capital? Uh, for a brand new one?
For a brand new reservoir?
Yeah, uh, like a estimate and comparison.
Probably three million.
Three million.
Yeah, approximately three, three million, I'd be estimating for a reservoir that size. So definitely worthwhile rehabilitating the existing one and continuing to rehabilitate it. The structure of it, uh, that's, uh, very sound. And, uh, there is a fair bit of, um. Metalwork that needs to be touched up, but it's not, uh, it's not in near as bad a condition as reservoir four, for example. It's relatively minor, the metalwork that needs to be refurbished. And there's a few cracks down the floor which have been sealed, but, and that's more a precautionary thing while you're doing it to reseal. That, there's no real evidence that they're deteriorating, but they have been noted, it's, it's not been a hundred percent. So while you've got it empty and going to clean out everything else, you're also doing the seal around the edge and. Cracks in the, in the floor at the same time. So that should get us, I would expect a minimum of another twenty five years out of that reservoir overall. Which is significantly different to a three million dollar new reservoir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point nine.
Okay, eleven point nine, construction of transfer station. Officers' recommendations there are council in compliance with the Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety four. Waste Reduction and Recycling Act twenty eleven, chapter one, section four of the Local Government Act two thousand nine. And the local government principals award the contract for the construction of waste transfer station. To A Gabriel Constructions P T Y L T D in accordance with the tender submission of one zero nine nine two seven seven, excluding G S T.
Thank you. And can I get a second up for that motion?
Second, Bowie.
Thank you councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, this will go a long way to alleviating the problems that, um, we have out there. It'll mean that larger vehicles will be able to come in there and tip over the face. Um, as it is out there, that, uh, facility we've got is sort of a bit substandard, I think. Um, this will make way to, to alleviating all the community's concerns about backing in and turning vehicles. So it'll be really well accepted, I think.
Thank you. And deputy mayor, would you like to comment?
Yeah, just a comment in support, um, madam mayor. I think, um, yeah, this is just another, um, sort of, um, string in the bow for, um, for our recycling agenda. And, um, I think it's, uh, moving, moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Um, just a clarification through the chair. So with the tender process they use, there's got to be a component of locals that they use? Like local builders?
So through you, madam mayor, on, um, the second page of the report, it says that each of the tenders were measured with a five percent component for local content.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. And, and that takes us to late item eleven point ten. Over to councillor Streton.
Okay, um, materials recovery facility. Council, uh, officers' recommendation there is council commence the detailed design of the materials recovery facility. MRF, under the following conditions, as part of the design, consider the option for incorporating the sorting of construction, demolition. Commercial and industrial waste, undertake consultation with the Mount Isa community regarding the introduction of a curbside recycling yellow top bin. Collected once, a fortnight in conjunction with the introduction of a weekly single garbage collection service. Include as part of consultation process options for residents wishing to have additional garbage collection services.
Thank you councillor Streton. Anyone second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Streton, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Yes, um, this is a very significant project for, um, the Mount Isa City Council. Um, we need to move down this road because, um, this is the way the, you know, the. State and federal government have been pushing down this way for a while now, so we're getting now, we've got considerable funding for it. Um, and I think, um, the, the local residents of Mount Isa will get behind it.
Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to talk on this motion?
Yeah, I mirror, um, thank you, madam mayor, I mirror councillor Streton's, uh, thoughts there. I think, um, you know, moving forward, I think within the next three to five years, um. The recycling will, will be pushed upon local government, um, regardless of whether they want to do it or not. So I think at this stage, if we can get six million from the federal government, I think it's, you know, well worth going and, and proceeding with. The MRF as it's, um, a, a, as it stands, um. Because like I said, we'll be forced, all local governments will be forced to, to recycle, you know, in the next few years anyway. So I think we need to proceed with it and, you know, work out how we need to, to. Have the least amount of, um, thing on the rate base.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Yes, madam mayor, through the chair, the, um, the, the, the waste levy, um, well currently being, um. Uh, supported by the government, the Mount Isa City Council being supported by the government, um, has no, uh. Definite, uh, ongoing, uh, funding for that. And we will definitely need to, um, manage our waste better. And this, uh, project will certainly, um, put us in, in a good position to, in the future, um, manage our, um. All of our waste, you know, the, uh, the domestic construction, uh, commercial and, and, uh. Uh, a, a, any, any sort of waste that actually comes in that, uh, adds tonnage to the, to the, uh, our landfills. That can, uh, that attracts a part of the levy. And, and if we can alleviate the amount of waste that goes into, uh, landfill, uh, we certainly will be saving money. Uh, in the future and, uh, it's a, it's a big step for the Mount Isa community. But I think, uh, with the, uh, consultation that's going to be going out, I think, uh, a lot of the answers will be, uh, uh, asked and answered. And eventually, uh, the Mount Isa community will get behind us with this, uh, project.
Any other comments?
Uh, madam mayor, yeah, I, I concur with, um, three councillors' comments. I, I think, um, it's, uh, yeah, we, we need to get on board with this. So it'll be interesting, um, I know there's a groundswell of support out there for the community to, um. Uh, be involved in recycling, a- and I believe that the consultation, um, process that we go forward with now around, um. Having yellow top bins, um, replace one of the, um, the delivery services that we currently do. Um, and have a look at how that's managed. Um, I think that there'll be a, um, a very interesting result received from the community in support of it, but, um, that's my view. Um, I'm really looking forward to that consultation being carried out.
Thank you. And I gue-, guess for me, I'm concerned about the impact on, on the rate payer. But this is really early days yet, so we have, we do need to build it and then sort of work out what the costs are going to be. I just want to, um, be sure that when we do the community consultation about changing the bin service. That will influence our decision on what we do. Is that correct?
Through you, madam mayor, it won't influence your decision on the construction and designing construction of the MRF. That's what this report is dealing with.
It's just the bin collections.
Correct. Uh, there is already a, um, there is already a, uh, a, a community consultation document that's been, uh, developed. Uh, through, um, promotion and development and specifically Lindsay.
Yep.
That was completed yesterday. Um, there, as part of that, there are at least, uh, three public meetings, if I remember correct, yep. Um, and there'll obviously be online feedback through a survey. And I imagine we'll get plenty of feedback through social media. Um, I am made aware that there was a survey that was done previously. And there was a significant amount of support for recycling, as I understand it. Nine hundred plus, uh, in support of that. So it's a matter of going down the consultation path, bringing the outcomes of the consultation back to council.
Thank you. And, and as I see it, is there going to be people jumping for joy? And there's going to be people who are very concerned about losing, uh, a rubbish day. So that's, that'll be a really interesting consultation.
Yeah, just through the chair, with, with the, uh, recommendations and all, all that from the surveys and all that. I mean, n- nine hundred is a good figure. And, and I can understand that people want recyclable, uh, recycling, but. When it comes down to paying their rates and it costs them more, I think that n- number will significantly drop. But, I mean, at the end of the day, it needs to happen. And we just need to limit the, the amount of pain, I think.
Thank you councillor Tully.
Um, and also as lo-, along with consultation, I think we need to do some sort of education on how people can reduce their waste as well. Because they need to be aware that if they're going to continue to generate the same amount of waste, it is going to cost more. And that's the way of the world and that's what the waste levy is trying to achieve, to get people to cut down on the waste they're generating.
Thank you councillor McCray. Any other com- comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Through you, madam mayor, um, just before we leave the waste management area, can I just recognise Sam Wiley? Um, Sam's the team leader of waste and Sam is, um, concluding his employment with council and moving on to another opportunity in Melbourne. Um, and just on behalf of the, uh, the executive team and the organisation, I'd just like to wish Sam all the best for the future.
Thank you, Sam. Good luck. Hope you don't get locked down there. Okay, well, that will move us on to our next item, which is item twelve. And, um, I'll hand you over to the deputy mayor councillor Phil Barwick.
Thanks, madam mayor. Um, so I'll move that council receives and accepts the February two thousand and twenty one customer services monthly report.
Thank you deputy mayor. Can I get a second up on that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on this motion?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. Uh, just, uh, the executive informs me that they've taken nineteen hundred and eighty two telephone calls during February. Um, so that averages out around ninety nine per day, um, so there's a pretty little busy front counter there. Um, dividing those requests up, um, oh, sorry, there, there was, there was, uh, customer requests that were noted in, um. Our iCaseworks database, um, during the month as well. So, um, and just dividing those up, uh, we had a hundred and twenty eight around local laws. Um, and a hundred and nineteen on water and sewer issues, uh, fifty seven waste management issues. And sixty one in the revenue department, property transfers and around concealed water leaks. Um. So of the five hundred and forty three cases in February, there's four hundred and eight have been closed, leaving, um, a hundred and thirty five remaining open as at the end of the month. Uh, year to date, um, we, uh, have a, had a thousand and seventy nine all up. Um, and, uh, there's still a hundred and thirty five currently open. Uh, so the total open cases now, including last year's and this year's, is six hundred and sixty seven cases, uh, which is probably sneaking up a bit for my liking. Um, I'd probably ask for a comment on the, on the executive on that, um.
Thanks, madam.
Through you, madam mayor, I might just go through the, um, acting manager of finance who looks after customer service area.
Through the chair, um, we're cleaning up about, uh, eighty percent of the calls that come in during the month. The other twenty percent, uh, take longer. Uh, when I look at the backlog, there's a number of cases there that have been closed but haven't been recorded. Uh, we do have, uh, some long tail cases, um, mainly relating to water issues, which we are dealing with. But, uh, we're endeavouring to bring the, uh, number of open cases down.
Thank you Stephen. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on this motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Any comments from the councillors?
Yeah, um, this is most likely for the C E O to answer. Um, being Camewell part of my portfolio, I'd just like the, um, our C E O about the lack of local laws visit to access the town for abandoned vehicles. Which have been there for over two years, just want to know if something's happening with those.
So through you, madam mayor, um, I actually had a chat with two of the rangers, um, in local laws, um. Last week or the week before, they are intending to head out to Camewell. They usually like going out to Camewell, um, uh, without everyone knowing that they're heading out there. Uh, because, uh, sometimes they will also undertake a bit of a blitz on, uh, unregistered animals. So I'm under the impression that they're heading out there relatively soon and abandoned cars will also be included in what they're doing. But I'm not going to indicate to you which day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just through the chair, that the, the abandoned car that's near the rugby union field, that's been there for a couple of months, yeah? Is that still going to, is that police or?
So we'll, we'll try and get that one removed as well. We've got to go through a process, how a car is declared abandoned, et cetera. And in some cases, we have to take the cars back to our depot and then sell the cars off there. You would, councillors may or may not have seen, there are a large number of cars at the depot at the moment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's abandoned.
And plain. Inside and out.
Just through the chair there, um, mister C E O, um, years ago, we've had a, eventually had an auction of all the abandoned cars we had at council. And raised considerable amount of money out of them too.
So through you, madam mayor, that's the normal process that we'll be aiming to do, but we have to make sure all the cars are cleared with the police. Uh, to make sure that no, they're not being used for any sort of further investigations or anything else like that. So, um, I think, um, as I say, the officers will be out to Camewell, um, over the next few weeks. Obviously, there's other works going on at Camewell at the moment. You'd be aware that council's spending in the order of around about a million dollars out at Camewell with all the different infrastructure that's been upgraded as well. So once, once we're out there supervising the contractors as well, there'll be a further opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to twelve point two.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor, um. I'll move, um, that council receives and accepts the February two thousand and twenty one corporate and financial services monthly report.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, can I get a second up for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on that motion?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor, um. So the February year-to-date financials, we have, uh, an overall surplus of, uh, six hundred thousand dollars comprising an operating deficit of, um. Four point five two three million and capital grants received of five point one two two million. Um, so, uh, at this stage of the year, um, the revenue is, is in line. Um, we're reporting fifty eight percent of operating revenue, um, and sixty seven percent of the year is gone. So, uh, we're looking forward, uh, to, um, revenue take up as we go forward. Um, the difference, um, in the improvement is that, um, we've received the, uh, the, the, uh, water. Waterboard dividend recently, which has, um, been significantly more than we budgeted for. So that's, um, put us in good stead for the rest of this year. Um, and there's also, um, other grants which are coming forward later on down the track. The, um, financial assistance grants from the Australian government. Um, so apart from that, the, um, the operating expenses are, are quite favourable to budget. Um, and are, um, uh, aligned with budget, so there's no significant, um, issues with the, um, operations. A couple of things I'd just like to point out, um, madam mayor, that the, um, water consumption notices, um. Um, were issued in the twenty third of second for a couple of the, the, um, the routes. And, um, uh, people can expect those, uh. The revenue in, is in process of issuing rates notices for properties for the period, for the six month period that we're in at the moment. Um, they'll be issued on the ninth of April, um, which is, um, a few weeks away now. Um, and a due date of, um, the tenth of May. Um, and just another note that the council's water and sewer department are commencing water meter readings for non-residential properties on the, in the, uh, third quarter. Um, and so they can expect those, um, uh, on the thirty first of the fifth, due on the first of the seventh. Uh, other notes are that, uh, the Mount Isa, uh, city council's, um, financial staff are, um, now, uh, processing, um. Uh, the, uh, collection of overdue rates, um, which we've sort of, um, backed off a little bit during the, the Covid outbreak of last year. Uh, so we can see an increase in that revenue starting to, to fall as well. And I'm told there's some, um, fairly good results for it. Uh, and in terms of the budgets, um, we, we are reviewing, um. Uh, and in terms of the budgets, um, we, we are reviewing, um, we're currently in the process of doing the, uh, twenty-two-year budget, um, now, so there'll be a meeting, meetings coming up and one today, I believe, on the, um, on the development of that. Um, but also the, uh, the twenty-one budget is, um, undergoing an interim review as well. Uh, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tully, would you like to comment on this one?
Thank you, madam mayor, yes, I, I have one concern here, and I'm not too sure whether I'm reading it right, but it's saying that two point five thousand, or two hundred and fifty thousand is current but not yet due, um, which sort of takes that total that's, you know, in, in the last two months, sort of, you know, upwards of, what, two million? And, and then it's saying that the rates come out on the ninth of the fourth, so I, I, I see that significantly increasing, is that correct?
Sorry, through you, madam mayor, I'll go to the acting manager.
We typically see a, uh, surge in payments just before due date. Um, we're not seeing any deterioration in pattern, uh, in terms of collections. I wouldn't expect that, uh, to alter significantly, when this was when, um, this was prepared about two weeks ago, I think, uh, as part of the monthly finance package. Um, I can tell you that the slightly difference is that the, the water issues, when the rates went out, we're not experiencing any that, which would tend to mean that, uh, these outstanding rates are going to be, uh, cleared up by due date. Big jump in, um, the one to forty, the, uh, the one to thirty day, uh, one to thirty day in arrears. We, we're at the end of, um, end of March figures.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments on this one? Uh, look, I personally would just like to thank the Queensland Treasury Corporation for working with, um, senior management team, and David Keenan and Stephen for all your hard work and your, your team. Uh, I know you have been burning the midnight oil, not just on this new budget, but also working on the operating, current operating budget, so a big thank you for, for that, we really appreciate all your hard work. There's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to twelve point three.
Thanks, madam mayor, um, I'll move that council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty-one promotions and development monthly report.
Thank you, deputy mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on?
Yeah, sure, madam mayor, there's a, an outline there of the, um, activity of the team, and, um, I think, once again, they've, um, they've shown, um, you know, great capacity to get things done, um, I, I believe our connection with the community is, um, is at a good level, um, there's always room for improvement, I guess, but, um, at the point, at this point in time, I think it's going pretty well, I'd like to thank the team for that. Uh, I'll just point out also, there's a, um, a number of surveys, uh, still open, um, although it is, uh, this is at the end of February, so we might need to just check a couple of those, but, um, it's showing here that, um, the first free first aid training courses for nonprofit organisations is still open, um. We've closed the, uh, clearly we've closed the community one hundred year celebrations, um, and I'm guessing that the, um, camera public submissions CCTV is still open, and also the principal pedestrian network surveys are still open for the community to, to, um, provide information on. Uh, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you, uh, councillor Tully, do you have any comments on this one?
No, thank you.
And, uh, I, how are we going with the free first aid training courses being snapped up, does anyone know how that's travelling at the moment?
Through you, madam mayor, I believe, um, afterwards last highlighted at the previous council meeting, there were a few more people that came on board, but I don't think there's been a rush, I think it's probably reached its peak.
Okay, because, um, I, I guess, I'd just like to remind the community that we have opened it up to small business, and as long as you have less than twenty, um, employees, you can take two positions up, so this is a very, very great initiative by council. So, um, I sort of urge any nonprofit organisation to register for those, those two openings that they are entitled to. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this takes us to item thirteen and executive services. So item, item thirteen point one, and this is the council decision report for February twenty twenty-one. Now, the council's office's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty-one council decision report. Can I get someone to move this motion?
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. And can I get a second for that?
I'll second, Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, um, councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, just to say, there's a, a number of items there that will be falling off the, um, uh, report, uh, of being completed, and so it's good to see that, uh, a number of those things have, uh, come to fruition.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Coghlan, any?
Yeah, just, um, to remind members of the public, especially sporting groups and community groups, that the, your food licences are due. We're all starting to get back into it this year, so just to work in with the council on that, because there's no fee charged with those, but to work in with the council to keep both yourself safe and your patrons safe. Um, the twenty-sixth of August, there was the miners' memorial committee, we were supposed to establish, um, some form of committee. I'd just like a report on how we're going with that.
Through you, madam mayor, we haven't done, not, not in the time that I've been here, there has not been a committee set up for the miners', uh, memorial, but I believe that, uh, madam mayor was referring to someone from Carpenteria Shire, whose name escapes me completely, who wanted to come back.
John Moran?
That's the one.
Yeah, yeah.
Who wanted to come back and talk about, uh, reinvigorating that.
Yeah, but I think we need to get a committee together ASAP to start working. Like, I, I, I know a few of us have already met with, with John and a few other miners that come back, so if we could just start the process on, on getting a committee together for that, because I know there's a lot of interested people out there that want to be involved.
And I think, uh, a, a next one might be, uh, um, a report to council, because, um, on the council of being the, um, establishing the committee, so, um, and then maybe getting a terms of reference, and then putting a call out to the community to, um, see who's interested in being, um, part of that, including councillors.
Okay, and also, um, the Friday night debrief, how are we going with that? How is that progressing?
What did you just spoke about? Were you listening?
Oh, we did too, sorry, cancel that, um, the pump track? Are we progressing with that?
Through you, madam mayor, at Gallipoli Park?
Yep.
Yes, um, uh, the director was down there, um, either yesterday or the day before, and it's, uh, moving ahead, yeah.
Okay, so we're up, we've sent out for tenders yet, or we're not up to that?
Yeah, tenders have gone out.
Yep. Okay, righty-o, um, legends of league?
Yes.
How, are, are we involved with that this time through?
Through you, madam mayor, there was, uh, some very nice photos of the councillors standing at the front in the green here, and, um, there's been an exchange of letters, if I remember correctly, between us and, is it Craig?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Craig's, that's moved along, I think everyone was.
Yeah, so our main function is the, um, support, uh, supporting sponsor.
Yep.
They actually go and do the work and coordinate with the different sponsors and the various committees, so we don't have a lot to do in that space.
Yep, what, has the date been set for that yet?
Yes, I think it was.
Part of the media release.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth of May, I think it is.
Yeah, it's in May, I can't remember the.
Okay, thank you for that.
I've got it here in front of me. It doesn't have the date listed, but yeah, it's done.
Thank you.
No, it can't be the twenty-sixth, it's supposed to be twenty-eighth, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-eight, yeah, good to know.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, any other comments on this one?
No, not a comment.
Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to our correspondence report, and the officers, officers' recommendation is that council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty-one cor- correspondence report, would anyone like to move this motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Um, councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, no, just the, I know we've received requests from our state member to talk about the water board and the Breakaway Creek project, and I think we've got another meeting scheduled with the water board, would it be the right thing to have a meeting with our state member before we have a meeting with the water board, or vice versa?
Um. A, a, as in, um, his plan for walking track?
And the plan for the walking track as well.
Okay.
I think he wants to update all the council on, on that.
Through you, madam mayor, his letter's been referred to the budget process, as would be any other person who's putting in for the budget process, and that'll be up to councillors to work out whether that's included as part of year one, two, three, four, or not at all.
Yep.
Um, so it's been put in in the same way as we would for a normal budget request from any member of the community.
Okay.
In relation to the water board, um, there is probably a separate discussion that needs to be held between council and the water board. Um, and then the, the, the member may wish to go and have a meeting with the water board himself as well.
But I thought he wanted a meeting with us as well.
And the water board. So.
No.
I guess there's two, there'll be a number of different.
Coming into the meeting with the water board that we're having?
So, so I, I guess what we'll, um, as a council, what we need to decide is what we're comfortable with, if we want to meet with the water board before meeting with the, a state member, or meet with the state member before we talk to the water board, so it'd be up to us as a council, I guess, how we want to proceed on that.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair, from the correspondence, I couldn't tell, uh, what the agenda was with that, um, around, uh, the meeting. I mean, it's, it just wanted a meeting about the water board, uh, there wasn't any, um, real agenda around that, so, uh, I guess we don't know what the local member really wants to talk about besides the water board.
So, through you, madam mayor, I would also suggest that his proposed time for the meeting has passed, so he had down there the twelfth of March. Um, so that's been and gone, but I, I would agree with you, there is nothing listed on his correspondence that suggests any sort of agenda. And maybe. So, uh, through you, madam mayor, I think it's probably you, prior to this request coming in from the local member, the council had already indicated that they wanted a separate meeting with the water board, so I'd be suggesting to go down that path, uh, before having another meeting with the water board and the local member.
Yeah, just through the chair, I, I'll recommend it, and I, and I keep saying, I, I think we, the council need to meet with the water board on a regular basis, because us being one of the biggest customers, um, I think we need to have a transparent, you know, um, operating of the water board, so I think we need to know what's going on, you know, on a monthly basis.
Again, through you, madam mayor, please don't forget we have, uh, a councillor who's on the water board, um, who's councillor Fortune. Um, and please be aware that we have a meeting with the water board occurring, um, very, very soon.
I, I understand all that, but I'm saying that we should continue every month, meet with the water board.
Well, that's something we can definitely look at, it's a good on, it's a good initiative. Any more comments on this?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, and that was your, your introduction, councillor Tully, so all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this takes us to item thirteen point three, and the officers' recommendation is that council officially endorse the North West Hospital and Health Service in WHHS strategic plan review submission. Can I get a, uh, someone to move this motion?
I'll move, madam mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor, can I get a second for this motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor, yeah, the, um, the North West HHS, um, uh, undergo a strategic plan review from time to time, um, and they invite submissions from, you know, key stakeholders, including council, and, uh, we, we provide a submission to that after, um, having some discussions with the, um, the team from the HHS that have been, um, been, uh, moving around, talking to stakeholders. I think we, uh, gained some valuable insights there and, and passed on some good comments to them in the submission.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
No, thank you.
Anybody else got any comments on this, um, strategic plan?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the CEO for sending that out and us being able to give our feedback. Um, I know I wasn't in with the, when they gave council, or gave yourself and the CEO the update, but I do believe the North West Hospital and Health Service need to be aware, I know they do want a new hospital, but they have got a duty of care to our residents and patients alike at this stage, so they still should be looking at, um, other avenues to help people meet their health requirements at this time. So, which was put in the letter.
Definitely. Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next one is thirteen point four, which is the updated register of delegations, um, the council to CEO. The officers' recommendation is that council adopts the update, updated register of delegations, council to CEO, version three. Can I get someone to move that motion?
I'll move that motion.
Thank, thank you, councillor Fortune, and can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, councillor Fortune, would you like to talk on this motion?
Thank you, madam mayor, the, um, CEO, um, as the leader of our, um, operations, has a, um, lot of responsibility, madam mayor, and the delegation of that responsibility through council is essential to the, um, CEO, uh, to do his job and, and, um, make the council operate in the manner that, um, is, uh, required for this day and age, and, um, a lot of responsibility also goes with that for CEO, and, uh, um, I'm, uh, it's a lot of, um, delegations there to go through, and, um, it's a, a lot of work and a lot of responsibility, uh, as I've said before, um, uh, it's a, it's a big job, and, um, I think we, we've got the perfect man for it, uh, David, uh, I think, um, with, uh, it needs to be updated, um, need to become, uh, more familiar with it, I suppose, with, with the amount of, uh, responsibility that, uh, CEO has for the local government area, and, um, it, uh, just needs to be, um, appreciated, I suppose, by council that, uh, we need to update, uh, these versions from time to time, and, uh, let the CEO get on with his job.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, councillor Tully, you have any?
No, thank you.
Anyone else, any comments? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that goes to late item thirteen point five, and it's a submission to the Legal Affairs and Safety Committee regarding youth justice and other legislation amendments to the Bill twenty twenty-one. The couns-, the, sorry, the council's officers' recommendation is that council endorse the submission made to the Legal Affairs and Safety Committee regarding Youth Justice and Other Legislation Agreement Bill twenty twenty-one. Can I have someone to move that motion?
McCray.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, thank you, councillor McCray, and a second.
Second.
Councillor Tully, um, councillor McCray, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Um, I would just like to say that I thought, um, yesterday was extremely beneficial, it was good to have, uh, members come and listen to the community's concerns, and I think they gained a lot of knowledge for that, from that, and, um, yeah, I just hope to see some good outcomes.
Thank you, ca-, um, councillor Tully, would you, any comments?
Thank you, madam mayor, I'd just like to, um, commend yourself and David on, uh, the way you spoke here in the, um, public hearing. I, I, I thought it was a good reflection on council, and, yeah, I, I do congratulate you, you both did a great job, and the submission was very thorough and very to the point, and, yeah, well done.
Thank you, and thank you, David, it was a great submission. Any, any other comments on that?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, I attended both sessions yesterday, madam mayor, and I, uh, again, I concur with, um, both councillors', um, comments there, um. The, uh, for me, a couple of points that were driven home, I think, were, um, uh, around, um, issues around the parenting level in, involvement and, um, education, and bringing them along with the, um, the journey of youth crime and, and the justice around that. Uh, and the other issue was around, um, the, uh, the on-country, uh, style of, um, um, for want of a better word, detention, um, but, but about, um, retraining youth and refocusing youth, um, um, for want of a better word, detention, um, but, but about, um, retraining youth and refocusing youth, um, on-country, um, it was also driven home quite well, I thought as well. Um, it's just my opinion on that. Thanks very much.
I guess what I would like to say is that, um, you know, youth crime is something that's in the forefront of council's mind at the moment. We, um, have, um, although we have very limited powers and it is a state government, um, problem, you know, it's, uh, it is on our doorstep and it is part of our role as to make Mount Isa livable. So, um, I'm really proud of what council have been doing with that, um, meeting with the Mount Isa Police, um, meeting with housing, um, meeting with the Minister for Youth and Justice, with also me- meeting with the Director General for Youth and Justice, meeting with the Youth and Justice Department, and also reaching out to Datsip and also to the Kalkadunes and also to the Mount Isa Hospital. So as a council, as much as we, we don't have a lot of power, we are on the front foot. We're trying to do what we can in this space. So I'm, I'm pretty proud of the council and the, um, and the steps we're taking at the moment. And I'm very, very grateful that the, um, the parliamentary inquiry was held here in Mount Isa and, and gave residents an opportunity to have a voice. And, uh, yeah, I think, you know, it's a step in the right direction, so. It was a good initiative. So, no more comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us to general business, which there isn't any. So, um, I'd like to now do a closed business resolution. Oh, yes, sorry. I'd now like to, um, what is the time? It is now ten fifty AM and I'd like to adjourn this meeting into closed business. I'd like to move the.
That we move this closed session into open business. Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. Okay, just go back to my... Okay, so 15.1, request for concession on water consumption charges due to financial hardship. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Moved. I'd like to go with the officer's recommendation that council approve the concession under section 1201c of the Local Government Regulation 2012 on the water consumption charges of $2,954.82 billed for the period of 1st of the 7th, 2020 to the 31st of the 12th, 2020, including the affected period, 1121 to 3621, that is yet to be billed for property assessment 03835-50000-000, due to financial hardship.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Stretton, all those in favour. And that's carried. The next one we've got is item 15.2, it's a request for concession on water consumption charges due to financial hardship. Would anyone like to move this motion?
Move. Officer's recommendation there, council approves a concession under section 1201c of the Local Government Regulations 2012 on tier two water consumption charges of 364332 occurring during the 2019-2020 financial year for the property assessment 06507-50000-000, due to financial hardship.
Thank you councillor Stretton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. Which takes us to item 15.3, and it's a request to write off the outstanding sundry debtor charges for invoice 2910036. Can I get someone to move this motion?
I'll move that council approves a write-off of outstanding sundry debtor invoice charges of $1,283.30 for invoice 2910036, due to financial hardship.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Tully, all those in favour. And that's carried. Then we move to item 15.4, and that's state lease renewal. Land described as lot two on Crown Plan 849726, the Lechimya Foundation. Would anyone like to move this motion?
Through the chair, I'll move option one, that council advised Department of Natural Resources, Mines and Energy that council support the application for renewal of lease SL13/53050 to the Lechimya Foundation of Australia Limited, over the land described as lot two on CP849726, 136 Duchess Road, Mount Isa, subject to the following conditions: A, the lease area is to be cleaned and kept free of debris and vermin at all times; and B, the perimeter fencing is to be repaired; and that council advised Department of Natural Resources, Mines and Energy that where the Lechimya Foundation of Australia Limited do not wish to renew the lease, that council would like to register their interest in purchase of the land.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion? Okay. Councillor Macrae, thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to late item 15.5, which is the Lake Julius Road upgrade, RFT 202105. Anyone like to read out this... Would like anyone put forward this motion?
Move. Officer's recommendation there, council award the contract for the upgrade of the Lake Julius floodway crossing to Jurack Civil PTY LTD for the sum of $1,832,742, subject to the confirmation of funding.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. And that leads us to the conclusion of this ordinary meeting, and the time is now 11:39am, and I now declare this meeting closed. Thank you very much, everybody.